Y'all please take your seats, thank you. Good evening, thank you for coming to the special board meeting, Justin Board of Trustees on the 20th of May at 6:45. I'm pleased that y'all have taken time to join us in compliance with the state government code on open meetings. Tonight's agenda has been appropriately posted. Let's call roll call now. Mr. Salinas?
President.
I mean, Mr. Flores?
President.
Mr. LaFoye?
President, thank you for coming.
Mr. Merle?
Here, thank you for coming.
And I'm Steve Salier, thank you. And Dr. Montoya?
President.
Thank you all. One of the knowledge visitors, Mayor Al Suarez is here. Thank you. Councilman Deborah Jones from Converse. Councilman Steve Brown from Converse. And City Manager Converse, Lanny Lambert. Thank you, Lanny. And also want to mention Randy Pacheco, who's a former city council member. And Wayne Harper, former Judson Board Member. Thanks, Wayne, appreciate it. We have one citizen to be heard, Ms. Deborah James, Councilwoman, Converse City Council. Deborah?
Is it on?
Hold it for ya.
I'm used to singing like that. Sorry about that, y'all. Good evening, Board Members. I'm not here to complain. I am here to say congratulations to Renee Pacheco and Melinda Salinas. I just want to say that I've had the excellent pleasure of knowing Ms. Pacheco for about six years, and we sit together side by side on City Council. And she has good things. She cares about children, and that's her main concern. She was a teacher for 30-plus years, and I think you're going to prosper having her on your board, because when she wants something to be said or heard, she does. And I'm very proud to call her not only my former council member, but a friend, because she is a friend, and she is a friend to all children. So I just want to take this time to say, if you don't want her, send her back to the City Council. We'll take her. But that's all I've got to say. I just want to say congratulations to both. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. If you can get the board members come around here in front, I got a presentation. And Dr. Montoya, Sonny? He had a short but great tenure, and I'll tell you, Sonny, I appreciate what you've done for him. Now, I know you're not going to go away. He's going to be a president, he's going to run our lawn next year. Already over there, so, Sonny, thank you very much. Thank you for everything you did. I have to read every precinct and end of the record, okay? So bear with me if I don't lose my voice, we'll go in here. I have to read every precinct and every vote, okay? So bear with me, I'll go fast as I can. Results canvassed on May 20th, single-member District 1. Precinct 30, 87, Salier 0, page 0. Precinct 3103, Salier 12, page 19. Precinct 3124, Salier 21, page 14. Precinct 3144, Salier 0, page 0. 3170, Salier 0, page 0. 3183, Salier 0, page 0. 4055, Salier 63, page 45. Precinct 4056, Salier 65, page 84. 4057, Salier 167, page 54. 4079, Salier 0, page 0. 4097, Salier 8, page 5. 4100, Salier 12, page 22. 4104, Salier 8, page 15. 4105, Salier 44, page 31. 4116, Salier 4, page 5. 4144, Salier 29, page 19. 4158, Salier 0, page 0. 4164, Salier 78, page 57. 4194, Salier 1, page 0. Final vote, Salier 5112, page 370. Okay, now the long ones come. There are 70 of these, so bear with me. Results canvassed on May 20th, at-large, place 6. 3087, Adair 0, Pacheco 0. 3103, Adair 16, Pacheco 15. 3124, Adair 19, Pacheco 18. 3144, Adair 0, Pacheco 0. 3170, June Adair 0, Pacheco 0. 3183, Adair 0, Pacheco 0. 4040, Adair 0, Pacheco 0. 4042, Adair 1, Pacheco 2. 4037, Adair 0, Pacheco 0. 4045, Adair 0, Pacheco 2. 4049, Adair 5, Pacheco 11. 4053, Adair 5, Pacheco 11. 4055, Adair 41, Pacheco 67. 4056, Adair 77, Pacheco 76. 4057, Adair 64, Pacheco 148. 4059, Adair 30, Pacheco 41. 4060, Adair 0, Pacheco 0. 4061, Adair 0, Pacheco 3. 4063, Adair 7, Pacheco 8. 4064, Adair 62, Pacheco 110. 4065, Adair 56, Pacheco 104. 4066, Adair 51, Pacheco 46. 4067, Adair 9, Pacheco 17. 4068, Adair 0, Pacheco 2. 4076, Adair 37, Pacheco 71. 4079, Adair 29, Pacheco 48. 4080, Adair 27, Pacheco 40. 4088, Adair 55, Pacheco 64. 4089, Adair 33, Pacheco 50. 4090, Adair 9, Pacheco 12. 4092, Adair 8, Pacheco 6. 4097, Adair 6, Pacheco 7. Anybody asleep yet? 4100, Adair 12, Pacheco 19. 4104, Adair 7, Pacheco 12. 4005, Adair 27, Pacheco 48. 4106, Adair 7, Pacheco 13. 4111, Adair 1, Pacheco 2. 4114, Adair 0, Pacheco 0. 4116, Adair 3, Pacheco 6. 4127, Adair 0, Pacheco 0. 4130, Adair 6, Pacheco 2. 4132, Adair 21, Pacheco 83. 4135, Adair 0, Pacheco 0. 4142, Adair 0, Pacheco 0. 4143, Adair 18, Pacheco 29. 4144, Adair 18, Pacheco 31. 4145, Adair 0, Pacheco 0. 4146, Adair 0, Pacheco 1. 4150, Adair 22, Pacheco 14. 4156, Adair 19, Pacheco 19. 4158, Adair 0, Pacheco 0. 4159, Adair 0, Pacheco 0. 4160, Adair 5, Pacheco 16. 4167, Adair 9, Pacheco 17. 4162, Adair 15, Pacheco 29. 4163, Adair 42, Pacheco 49. 4164, Adair 47, Pacheco 89. 4166, Adair 3, Pacheco 2. 4168, Pacheco 7, no, excuse me, Adair 17, Pacheco 13. 4182, Adair 0, Pacheco 0. 4187, Adair 0, Pacheco 0. 4189, Adair 8, Pacheco 11. 4190, 0, Pacheco 0, Adair. 4191, 0, Adair, 0, Pacheco. 4193, Adair 1, Pacheco 0. 4194, Adair 1, Pacheco 1. 4196, Adair 0, Pacheco 0. 4197, Adair 0, Pacheco 0. 4198, Adair 20, Pacheco 14. 41, excuse me, 4201, Adair 0, Pacheco 0. Totals, Adair 973, Pacheco 1488. We're not done yet. Okay. Well, results canvassed on May 20, 2015, at-large, place 7. Okay, this is the long one. 3087, Merle 0, Salinas Merle, Tanner 0, Suarez 0. 3103, Merle 6, Salinas 13, Tanner 6, Suarez 6. 3124, Merle 18, Salinas 14, Tanner 1, Suarez 3. 3144, Merle 0, Salinas 0, Tanner 0, Suarez 0. 3170, Merle 0, Salinas 0, Tanner 0, Suarez 0. 3188, Merle 0, Salinas 0, Tanner 0, Suarez 0. 4040, Merle 0, Salinas 0, Tanner 0, Suarez 0. 4042, Merle 1, Salinas 1, Tanner 1, Suarez 0. 4043, Merle 0, Salinas 0, Tanner 0, Suarez 0. 4045, Merle 1, Salinas 1, Tanner 0, Suarez 0. 4049, Merle 1, Salinas 0, Tanner 0, Suarez 0. 4053, Merle 1, Salinas 6, Tanner 5, Suarez 6. 4055, Merle 28, Salinas 42, Tanner 16, Suarez 25. 4056, Merle 38, Salinas 72, Tanner 21, Suarez 18. 4057, Merle 74, Salinas 81, Tanner 17, Suarez 28. 4059, Merle 17, Salinas 26, Tanner 5, Suarez 25. 4060, Merle 0, Salinas 0, Tanner 0, Suarez 0. 4061, Merle 0, Salinas 1, Tanner 1, Suarez 1. 4063, Merle 4, Salinas 5, Tanner 0, Suarez 6. 4064, Merle 45, Salinas 60, Tanner 27, Suarez 30. 4065, Merle 35, Salinas 69, Tanner 15, Suarez 33. 4066, Merle 25, Salinas 32, Tanner 19, Suarez 19. 4067, Merle 3, Salinas 7, Tanner 1, Suarez 15. 4068, Merle 1, Salinas 0, Tanner 1, Suarez 0. 4076, Merle 34, Salinas 37, Tanner 8, Suarez 33. 4079, Merle 11, Salinas 53, Tanner 5, Suarez 5. 4080, Merle 8, Salinas 24, Tanner 17, Suarez 13. 4088, Merle 25, Salinas 47, Tanner 14, Suarez 30. 4089, Merle 18, Salinas 45, Tanner 7, Suarez 13. 4090, Merle 6, Salinas 13, Tanner 2, Suarez 0. 4092, Merle 0, Salinas 4, Tanner 5, Suarez 5. 4079, Merle 3, Salinas 3, Tanner 5, Suarez 3. One more page. 4100, Merle 8, Salinas 15, Tanner 8, Suarez 5. 4104, Merle 5, Salinas 13, Tanner 2, Suarez 1. 4105, Merle 15, excuse me, 4105, Merle 15, Salinas 30, Tanner 17, Suarez 13. 4106, Merle 5, Salinas 4, Tanner 3, Suarez 5. 4111, Merle 0, Salinas 1, Tanner 0, Suarez 1. 4114, Merle 0, Salinas 0, Tanner 0, Suarez 0. 4116, Merle 1, Salinas 4, Tanner 1, Suarez 3. 4126, Merle 0, Salinas 0, Tanner 0, Suarez 0. 4130, Merle 1, Salinas 5, Tanner 1, Suarez 2. 4132, Merle 19, Salinas 28, Tanner 14, Suarez 39. 3135, Merle 0, Salinas 0, Tanner 0, and Suarez 0. 4142, Merle 0, Salinas 0, Tanner 0, Suarez 0. 4143, Merle 12, Salinas 15, Tanner 9, Suarez 7. 4144, Merle 13, Salinas 18, Tanner 8, Suarez 9. 4145, 0 Merle, 0 Salinas, 0 Tanner, 0 Suarez. 4166, 0 Merle, 1 Salinas, 0 Tanner, 0 Suarez. 4150, Merle 9, Salinas 9, Tanner 14, Suarez 4. 4156, Merle 5, Salinas 14, Tanner 10, Suarez 7. 4158, Merle 0, Salinas 1, Tanner 0, Suarez 0. 4159, Merle 0, Salinas 0, Tanner 0, Suarez 0. 4160, Merle 4, Salinas 7, Tanner 5, Suarez 3. 4161, Merle 7, Salinas 5, Tanner 5, Suarez 6. 4162, Merle 4, Salinas 12, Tanner 11, Suarez 19. 4163, Merle 23, Salinas 36, Tanner 12, Suarez 13. 4164, Merle 41, Salinas 46, Tanner 13, Suarez 27. 4166, Merle 0, Salinas 5, Tanner 0, Suarez 0. 4168, Merle 5, Salinas 12, Tanner 7, Suarez 6. 4182, 0 Merle, 0 Salinas, 0 Tanner, 0 Suarez. 4187, 0 Merle, 0 Salinas, 0 Tanner, 0 Suarez. 4189, Merle 5, Salinas 5, Tanner 3, Suarez 5. 4190, Merle 0, Salinas 0, Tanner 0, Suarez 0. 4199, Merle 0, Salinas 0, Tanner 0, Suarez 0. 4193, Merle 0, Salinas 1, Tanner 0, Suarez 0. 4194, Merle 0, Salinas 1, Tanner 0, Suarez 0. 4196, Merle 0, Salinas 0, Tanner 0, Suarez 0. 4197, Merle 0, Salinas 0, Tanner 0, Suarez 0. 4198, Merle 6, Salinas 19, Tanner 4, Salinas, Suarez 5. 4201, Merle 0, Salinas 0, Tanner 0, Suarez 0. Totals, Merle 591, Salinas 963, Tanner 347, and Suarez 501. Thank you for your patience. I can't talk. I don't want to be president next year. Okay. At this time, we got the canvass of votes done. Mr. Merle asked to say a little something? No? Are you fine? Okay, good, good. Okay, we're going to swear in. Oh, do we have to vote on a vote? Actually, vote on a vote to accept it? No, we just have to read it in?
Read it.
I read it. That's all you got to do. You don't vote, right? We don't have to vote, no. Okay, now the fun part, swear in.
Sir, we have to vote on acceptance of the candidates in the votes.
We do?
Acceptance of the candidates.
Okay, well, let's do it. Do I have a motion to accept the?
Motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, we're legal. Sounds good. Now we get to swear new elected board members. Mayor Suarez is going to do. Ms. Pacheco and then Judge Lopez, our JP4, is going to swear myself, as Ms. Salinas said. Ask Al for Al. Mr. Suarez, you want to swear? Yeah, here we go. Come on. Come on, let's all get out.
First of all, I'd like to say that I'm very honored today that former councilwoman, Renee Pacheco, asked me to be here today. It's been a long road ahead. You've done very well in City Converse, and we're very proud of you. The city is very proud of you, of what you've done for us. I personally asked Renee to run for city council in 2008. She stepped up, and so here we are, starting a new road for you. Very proud of you, Renee. And this is not easy to do, to turn you over to the school board, but it's an honor to do that, because we work, City Converse works so closely with this board, that we're very proud of the work that you guys have done, you know, for the last eight years I've been mayor. But without further ado, on behalf of the Converse City Council that showed up today, and the city manager, we're very proud of you as well, to like to relay a message that they are proud. And again, if everyone would please rise for this occasion here. Please raise your right hand. In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I
I, Renee Pacheco
do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear
that I will faithfully
that I will faithfully
execute the duties
execute the duties
of the office
of the office
of Judson Independent School District School Board Member
of Judson Independent School District School Board Member
of the state of Texas
of the state of Texas
and will
and will
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
preserve, protect
preserve, protect
and defend
and defend
the Constitution
the Constitution
and laws of the United States
and laws of the United States
of this state
of this state
so help me God
so help me God
congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Rogelio Lopez Jr. I'm the Justice of the Peace in Precinct 4, Place 1, and it is my privilege and honor to be here this evening to celebrate this special occasion and to swear in these new members. And I want to thank you in advance for all the work that you're going to be doing on the board, as well as thank the rest of the board for what you do on behalf of our children and our families here in Precinct 4 and Judson. So, without further ado, if you would please raise your right hand. In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I
I, Melinda Salinas
Melinda Salinas, do solemnly swear or affirm
do solemnly swear or affirm
that I will faithfully execute
that I will faithfully execute
the duties of the office of
the duties of the office of
Judson Independent School District Board Member
Judson Independent School District Board Member
of the state of Texas
of the state of Texas
and will to the best of my ability
and will to the best of my ability
preserve
preserve
protect
protect
and defend
and defend
the Constitution
the Constitution
and laws of the United States
and laws of the United States
and of this state
and of this state
so help me God
so help me God
congratulations.
Yes, sir. All right, one more time. In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I, Steve Salier
I, Steve Salier
do solemnly swear or affirm
do solemnly swear
that I will faithfully execute
that I will faithfully execute
the duties of
the duties of
Judson Independent School District School Board Member
Judson Independent School District School Board Member
of the state of Texas
of the state of Texas
and will to the best of my ability
and will to the best of my ability
preserve
preserve
protect
protect
and defend
and defend
the Constitution
the Constitution
and the laws of the United States
and the laws of the United, the Constitution and the laws of the United States
and of this state
and of this state
so help me God
so help me God
congratulations.
At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Montoya for nominations for board president.
First of all, congratulations to our board members. I know that we can all work together to continue to improve a great school district and assist our students, so I look forward to that team effort together. At this time, board members' nominations are now in order for the office of president.
I nominate Steve Salier.
Second.
Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Please raise your right hand to vote, so that we have a unanimous record. Please raise your right hand to vote for Mr. Salier as president. Okay? We have a unanimous voting.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now, open the nominations for vice president.
I nominate Gilbert Flores, vice president.
We don't need a second. Okay. Okay. Are there any other nominations? All in favor of Mr. Flores, say yes.
Yes.
Any abstentions?
No.
No.
Okay. Mr. Flores, your vice president. Okay. And now, take nominations for secretary.
I nominate Renee Pacheco for secretary.
Are there any other nominations?
I nominate Mr. Macias for secretary.
Okay. Any other nomination? Okay, we'll vote on Ms. Pacheco first. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
We had one no. Okay. Ms. Pacheco, your secretary?
Thank you.
Now take nomination for assistant secretary.
I nominate Mr. LaFoye for assistant secretary.
I keep time.
Come on, let's go.
I'd love to nominate Melinda Salinas. I respectfully decline also.
Martin, would you like to be assistant secretary?
No, sir, thank you.
Any other nominations?
Mr. Macias?
No, I respectfully decline.
Okay, well, we won't have assistant secretary. Okay, thank you. I want to thank you all for coming. I think some folks want to say some words. Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, thank you. Okay. I'm learning, I'm going to learn the ropes here. I'd like to say thank you. Take this opportunity to thank all of the voters of Judson ISD. I'd like to thank, oh my goodness, I'm seeing people that came in that I hadn't seen. Thank you all, my family and friends, for being here to support me. This is something that you cannot do on your own. You can't run a campaign as extensively as we did. You cannot do it by yourself, and there's a team of people who helped me, and I'd like to just personally thank them. First of all, my incredible hero, my spouse, my husband, Johnny Harris, thank you. Every single campaign that I've ever run in, every one of them, Johnny's grandson was always right there. Every victory that I ever had, that young man was right there. Garrick Perkins, I want you to stand up, because every victory I've had, Garrick Perkins helped me. And I know that I got this victory because of you, Garrick. Thank you very much. There, my family and my brother surprised me. I had no idea that he drove in from Houston. My brother and sister-in-law, I'd like for them to stand. My brother Ray and my sister-in-law Shawna. My dear friend and my campaign manager, I could not have done one single thing without this man, Randy Pennell. There are a number of other people, but I just want to read this list very quickly. Chris Pryor, Giles Babb, Cindy Ambrose, Nicholas Williams, Terry Carter, Calvin Phillips. Chris Pryor, Giles Bab, Cindy Ambrose, Nicholas Williams, Terry Carter, Calvin Phillips, Bishop Brent Bryant and the Redeeming Grace Church. And representing the Redeeming Grace Church here tonight is Wayne Harper. Thank you, Wayne. There's so many, so many voters, people that I cannot name. But what I need you to understand is that, you know, Melinda, it's good when you have somebody that helps you, your dad. And Melinda, I felt like my dad helped me to get here, so. And congratulations to you and Steve. My dad helped me also, Melinda, and that's why I'm sitting in this seat. I don't know what else to say. I'm going to do the very best that I can to serve the Judson community as I did in the city of Converse. Converse, I love you. I'm not going anywhere, I'm still going to be here, and I want you to be here too. My dear friend, the mayor of Converse, Al Swartis, thank you. It was an honor for you to swear me in, sir, thank you so much. You all are in great hands with that city manager, Lanny Lambert, sitting out there. Thank you so much, and God bless, thanks.
Thank you. Your turn. Go right ahead.
Didn't know I was going to speak, but. Just like to say thank you to current Judson employees and former Judson employees who are here, who supported me throughout this campaign, certainly to my parents and my boyfriend and all of my colleagues who are here who drove in from Potite. Really appreciate it. You know who you voted for, you know what you got, and I will continue to do what's best for the kids and for the staff and for the parents. Thanks.
Just a couple of words, I want to thank everybody who helped me, my wife Sally, you know, my treasurer, campaign manager, stuffer of envelopes, whatever, thank you, okay? And everybody who supported me throughout the campaign. I want to actually say it's an honor to be President. I mean, we really have a chance to do some great things the next couple of years. We have a new board, a new superintendent, and a new wave of positive stuff coming our way. I think everybody's heart's really in it right now, and always agree to disagree sometimes, you know? That's where we have to go, and we should never always agree on the same thing. That's why there's seven board members up here. But I'll pledge one thing, I'll try to keep it, you know, as honest and truthful as we can, and I ask the support of the board members, Mr. Salinas and Gilbert and LaFoy and Mr. Macias, and we will make this a better district. We got a new superintendent, and I'll tell you what, he hasn't been here 100 days, but he's hitting the ground running, and I appreciate him, so. Thank you all for coming. Anyone else?
I just want to take this moment and thank Ms. Adair. She couldn't make it today, you know, she ran a great race, and she served on Judson Board for a long time, and she really did a good job while she was here, but I just wanted to recognize her at this time.
Well, you kind of surprised me on that, Gilbert. I was going to say a few words as well about Ms. Adair and also Sonny Merle for stepping in and doing what he could to move this district forward. And obviously, both individuals played a role in bringing our new superintendent, and we'll always be grateful for that. So it's been a pleasure to work with both June and with Sonny, and look forward to working with this new board.
You know, again, I close with the honor of being able to work with the best board, and I know that the goal is always doing the best for students, and that's what we're going to do. I think we can work together very effectively, and that's what it's about, so thank you.
Anyone else? No? Thank you all for coming. We'll see y'all tomorrow night, this means adjourned, at 7:20.